Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at a regular board meeting. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room prior to public comment this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form, and any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee decision or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Also, please understand if you offer a public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Ms. Cordenas will not be able to attend this evening, but we have six of our team here. And with that, we'll move to our Pledge of Allegiances. If everyone would please stand.
... through the light of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas letter, my pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, we have no public comments this evening, so we'll move straight into our Finance and Audit Committee workshop, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Dindell.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We've got a couple of reports tonight. First on the agenda is our bond construction update. I'm not sure whether Dr. Brandon, Mr. Dineheim, or Mr. Lopez is going to help us, but maybe we can be tag teamed to get all three. Welcome, RJ. Thanks for...
Good evening to the gentleman that needs no introduction. RJ Lopez.
All right, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and Board of Trustees. It's wonderful to be out here tonight. You will be hearing eventually a lot more from Carl and the others as construction gets underway and as we start meeting quite a bit more. We've had a few meetings up until now, and I'm going to run through what we've been up to up to this point. Just as a reminder, these are the overall timelines as far as the overall bond projects go. We've got the more detailed schedule, and if you have any questions on any of these, feel free to ask for sure. I just want to make sure we continue to show these and discuss anything that ever changes. Right now, we're on track, on schedule for all these. I have provided a project status update that gives you a brief overview of each project that we're working on. Quickly, it just shows, you know, which architect is working on the project, the status at the very top of that project. So you can see Crockett Elementary is 100% complete in the bidding process. The estimated completion date is August 2026, so that's when it would actually open and construction would be completed. Recent activity, we've had Lee Lewis selected as the general contractor, and then we're coordinating with the city on permitting. And upcoming, exciting, we get to start construction on Crockett Elementary. So that'll be the first bond project that gets underway. So knock on wood, in the month of August, you should see some construction on Crockett Elementary for the 2025 bond projects, which is very exciting. And then we've also gone through and listed out each project and just given you a quick overview of what's going on and what you can see in the future. I've listed each one of these on a slide just to make it a little more graphic, but it has the exact same information. We just went over Crockett. Next project would be McGill. Right now McGill is at 100% schematic design complete. We are, we will eventually be bidding that one out as well, like we did Crockett. We do preliminary reviews with the city so that we kind of have it on their radar and make sure we have any comments incorporated prior to finishing out the drawing. So we've gone through that process, and we've also started working through the 100% schematic design review, which is kind of the more sketchy, maybe 20,000-foot view of the plan. Now we're going to start getting closer to that 10,000-foot, 5,000-foot, and really narrow into the details of the plan. So the upcoming work on McGill would be just moving from 2D plans to really 3D massing and details on McGill. And then on the larger projects, they just take a little bit more time, but we have been working towards those. The schematic design is underway for Glen New Middle School. We're working through getting surveys coordinated. We're looking on, looking at bringing on the construction manager at risk currently. We've walked through the existing facilities with the principals and some of the design team to just verify scope, talk about every space that was included within the bond scope, and make sure that everybody has a good idea of what the original goals were and what's best for the campus. So that's, that's kind of what we, we looked at when walking through those spaces. So the next step is just to take a fine-tooth comb through the list of spaces that we have and make sure that those are, those fall in line with the needs of the campus, and then then we can actually start making blocks and laying those out on the side. So the upcoming items for Glen New Middle School would just be looking at those lists of spaces, and then we're also scheduling site visits of other example middle schools so that the, the design team and the leadership team can really see with their own two eyes what the middle schools built within the past 15 to 20 years really feel like and look like, and they can hear from the, you know, maintenance staff and the teachers and the principals, because, you know, it's one thing to see pictures, but to experience and then also be able to just hear feedback from others is, really puts a whole different perspective into the design process. And so we're, we're really excited about that potential. I have a couple pictures of just walking through some of the example facilities with the team. You can see on the right there, we had a really good cross-section from our side of engineers and project managers and architects, and then from y'all's side, we had principals and CTE director and the Director of Food Service. So trying to make sure that when we're walking and talking about the new facilities and the correlation between the existing and the new, that we kind of have everybody there to discuss the, the potential and the opportunities for the new building. So a lot of really excited individuals and a lot of exciting conversations happening during those tours. And I put five, six, and seven because a majority of the same team went through Glen, Central, and Lakeview, just so that we could also talk about making sure that y'all's standards are, are being met, so that if we're selecting certain ceiling tiles or carpet tiles, if there's opportunity to, you know, select similar items to where, you know, economy of scale and purchasing and maintenance, make it more efficient, then, then we want to do that. So we're trying to document those items where that makes sense. I think, I mean, I know each school is going to have a little bit of their own identity, but they're also all going to be under the umbrella of San Angelo ISD, so we want to make sure that each team knows that while they're working on it. All right, and the Lakeview update will be pretty similar. We're working on survey, working on bringing on the construction manager at risk. We also walked the schools, and then we're reviewing the list of spaces. So it's kind of at the same stage as Glen. That completion date for Lakeview is January 2028. And then lastly, we have Central, and that one's currently under schematic design. It's also survey scope coordination and the CMR request for proposals underway. So kind of the same status. We'll be reviewing the list of spaces tomorrow, actually, with the principal and leadership team, and then scheduling visits of example theaters, of example competition gyms, of example culinary spaces. So right now, we're putting together pictures and options for places to visit, and we'll be narrowing, narrowing the list. So it's an exciting time. Any questions on those projects? I went through kind of quick. We've got a lot of going on. It's kind of a quick synopsis.
Looks like we're putting gas in the car and fixing to take off, making the plan for the trip, so moving forward. Any questions for Mr. Lopez?
I will apologize to some of the leadership team. We've been sending a lot of email invites, a lot of calendar invites to get people together to work towards these projects.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Lopez, and Parkill, for doing what y'all are doing. The, the idea of creating efficient spaces that make it easy for our maintenance team, and I know it's partly why we hired Mr. Danheim to make sure that he and Mr. Candy were working together to make sure that we make these facilities easy to maintain for the next 30 years is important because that's how long they last around here.
We're counting on 60, at least, on these.
Yes, 75 wouldn't be too bad, so that's our goal.
Well, great. We proved that to be possible in the past, so we'll continue that tradition of...
There you go.
...laying the groundwork for some good facilities that will last this long term. So again, thanks for making the drive again, and we'll look forward to the next update.
Yeah, glad to be here. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is, Dr. Moran's going to help us with an update on Senate Bill 13, library materials.
All right, this is a new law that has been passed, well, new, new legislation anyway, for districts to consider. Dr. Gomez is going to overview this for us. Ms. Hoag is in the audience, our media specialist and leader at Central High School. But essentially, the board has a decision to make. We'll propose and educate the board, and then on the 25th, provide the opportunity for the board to, to go either direction. So, Dr. Gomez.
Do you want me to go up or speak from here?
Your call.
You're good. You got a mic?
I apologize that I missed the change in order, so I'm, I'm back on. Sorry. So absolutely, I know that I've sent, you all have received a lot of literature this summer with the legislative updates. And so we first started talking about this bill in June. We revisited it in July, and just want to give you an update, and really, the key requirements of the law, making sure that everyone understands that now the board will approve every library purchase, including those that are donated. So you all have the proposed DFB local policy, if you want to refer to it, or we'll discuss it more on the 25th, but it's specifically on page three, where it specifies that at least 30 days prior to your vote, you must have access to that. So what that means internally, you can have policy, but it changes your administrative regulations. So Ms. Hoag and I have, I've spent a lot of time working, and I want to commend her hard work, because even the process for librarians and library paraprofessionals to submit orders have to change in the timing so that we can get them to all of you and enough notice. Another key component to this law is the parent access to their children's specific materials. So we had that enabled in Destiny previously, last year. It was available upon parent request. We will continue that, but we've widened that transparency. Ms. Moran, do you mind referring to the webpage? There's a new component on our SAISD webpage under the parent section, specifically under library services, that Mr. Wilcox has worked with Ms. Hoag on getting this information there. But you'll see that live link, instructions to access your student's library account. So right now, we have a lot of information going to parents. We're trying to chunk this. More, more than anything, we want parents to know, we're ready to welcome them and their students Thursday and Friday. So we will continue to push this information out, but we have it posted in multiple places. So for all of you to see there, it's new and accessible on that library service page. Then, more than ever, it's important to note with this law that parents and guardians are the primary decision makers. So they can also submit titles they do not want their students to check out. There's a way within the system where librarians can go through and mark off certain titles so that they would not have access to those. And that is kind of just the big summary, the purchasing, the parent access, and then, of course, it's specific in the policy, the language, which introduces indecent and profane. So I add that prohibited content and uses that language specifically. The last portion that we have in ours, specifically page four, seven of the proposed policy, the challenge of library materials. The district has had a reading content selection committee for a number of years. So that's why this policy was presented to you from TASB. And then it goes through and breaks down the guiding principles, what's the difference between an informal and a formal challenge, if that should come to be with a book. Some districts, there's a consideration of a separate local school library advisory council. This district would have to do that if we hit a certain percentage of a request for that, but because we have the current process in place with the reading content selection, we're proposing to continue that unless we should need to move forward with the, it's called the, again, abbreviation, LSLACL, Slack Committee. So do you have general, specific questions you'd like to go through tonight and hear specifically about on the 25th? I just know you're going to be approving a lot of library books.
Yeah, there's no way around that. It doesn't look like...
No, sir, there's no way.
But the, I mean, that's, okay, but the, I think the good thing, the thing to point out is that you and our librarians have worked, we're ahead on this in a lot of ways. We're really ahead of the state in having a policy in place that has allowed parents, one, to see the books that were checked out by their kid, children, and two, to allow for parents to, and community members to come and discuss what books were appropriate for our libraries or not. And so in some ways, like, we're having to formalize it and make, tweak it a little bit to make things fit into how we were doing things, but the reality is, in a lot of ways, we were ahead. I mean, obviously, the board wasn't approving every book that was purchased, but from a transparency with our parents, a lot of this is what we were already doing, just in a little bit different format.
Yes, sir. I really want to commend Ms. Hoag, and all of our staff have been a part of that process. We have always said we want parents to be involved, but it's super important to stress that the parent is that primary decision maker. Now, you'll notice on page four, seven, in the challenge of library materials, it does clarify that a district employee, a parent or guardian of a district student, or a district resident, may challenge library materials. But ultimately, the individual parent or guardian has the final say on, I do not want my child checking this out, and our librarians are able to make that happen.
How often do we have parents challenging with the current policy?
You specified parents, so parents are very few, because parents already have had the option to say, I don't want my child checking out that book, which is not a problem. So if you have people that are not parents and outside of that role, that's more frequent than parents.
So, okay, okay. So we get a lot of outside?
I wouldn't say a lot, but we do get some.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I wanted to ask, in approving the library books, what is the expectation of the board? None of us have library science degrees. That's why we hire Ms. Hoag and others. So what are we, how far into the books are we supposed to go?
Well, we, there are requirements of information that we have to provide, and all of that information will be given to you. So in terms of how far do you have to go, you, you hit on a very important part. We have staff that do have that degree of expertise. They understand the law. Some of them have multiple degrees in this very thing, and they understand what we are allowed to adopt or not adopt. So they're working under those guidelines and preparing for what's presented to you to meet those. Now, I can't speak to you as an individual board member of how much deeper you take that, but I know that my degree in understanding and procuring library materials is not as deep as Ms. Hoag's either. So I do entrust in our employees who have that depth of knowledge to do their job.
So there will be some serious vetting before it finally gets to...
All of our books do go through that process, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, and, and also, in this process, due to the timeframe, some vendors are faster than others. So we've even really been selective about which vendors, because to get vendors that are timely, to get you orders 30 days in advance, this really has changed our entire timeline and process. So a lot of homework is done before any books will ever come your way.
Can, I'm sorry. Can we also just, for anybody who's watching or listening, just say that, like, this vetting has already been done? This is nothing new because of this, this...
Yes, ma'am. You're exactly right, Ms. Mazzell Flint. This vetting has not changed. What has changed is the amount of extra work that will be put on our employees to meet the 30 days posting, and also, what's most important to us is that we're getting materials in our libraries, so we get materials in the hands of our children. So we will make all of that happen, but there's a lot of extra work that will come with this. So while we're not afraid of the extra work, we're committed to doing what it takes, but we're not presenting to you information that does not meet the right criteria.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. We look forward to next week talking about that.
I want to thank Ms. Hoag. She will also be here next week, but I've reassured her she does not need to sit through the whole meeting. So thank you, Ms. Hoag, for your time. It's very busy as we prepare for the school year.
Ms. Hoag, you are welcome to stay if you'd like to. It's not an absolute, so thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. Next on our agenda are our reports, our Bills and Accounts report. They start on page seven. If you'd like to go to page 11. Couple of things. It shows our committed fund balance at 4.7 million. We've got a significant amount of capital projects, and also, we've still got a million dollars of our construction projects in that, in that fund that we haven't moved yet. Couple of other things in there. There's always a property insurance deductible and security. We always have those out there, just in case we need those, so. Also, on the same page, it also shows our unassigned fund balance amount currently at 52.8 million, somewhere in there, a healthy unassigned balance, which we're moving forward with this year. That's some good news. A lot of districts do not have that, that they have some fallback where they can actually take care of some projects without adopting a deficit budget, for sure. If you want to move forward to page 13, that's our June revenue and expenditures report. This is the 10th month of the budget process, so we should be approximately at 83% of our budget. Right now, we're at 82% of both, at both revenues and expenditures. As is normal, the state contributions are at 71%, while our local revenue is almost 98% complete. The local revenue comes in early, makes our budget whole, and then the state makes the whole as we move forward to the end of our fiscal year. Our federal receipts are lagging behind at 50%. And also, as note, we show a construction actual expenses right now at 7.4 million rather than 7 million, something that we probably just haven't moved funds over to accommodate those, that $400,000 worth of expense, which will come shortly, I'm sure, with a general budget amendment. Check registers is contained on pages 13 through 32. I'm not sure if anybody's got any questions on any of the checks. If you do, make sure you let Dr. Brandon know, and we always get answers to that. We usually, a lot of times, will do that before the meeting, and so there, all those checks are already reconciled in our minds before even we get to the meeting, which is, which is very nice. Investment reports are on pages 32 through 37. As of June, we had invested funds totaling $67 million procs with interest earned at Interest rates between 4.3 and 4.52%. Any questions about the investment reports? If not, we can move to the tax collection report, which is on page 38. Collection rates for 2024 are at 97.86%, while the 2023 collection rates were slightly ahead at 98.58%. There's no, if there's no questions about the tax collection report, we move to the PO report for purchases over $20,000. Those POs are contained on pages 37 through 44. As is the procedure at the beginning of the year, there are a lot of, a lot of maintenance items in there, plus our school resource officers' PO is in there, and there's also some professional learning expenses. If there's any other questions about any of those POs? All right. If not, Dr. Kingman, that concludes the Finance and Bills and Accounts report.
Thank you, Mr. Dindell. All right, next, we're going to work on our 25-26 budget workshop, and Dr. Brandon and Ms. Flores are here to answer questions and work us through that.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees, good evening. Ms. Flores is with us. The, the brains behind the budget, that's what I'm going to say. Certainly have your budget workbook to look through, and I would encourage you, if you have any questions, certainly to email those to me and/or Mrs. Flores for us to review and get, get an answer back to you. We're going to kind of go through, rather than page by page in the workbook, going to take you through the information presentation tied to our budget and tax rate discussion as we, before we move into the 25th for that approval. So as we look through the objectives for this evening, we're going to review the preliminary budget and then set a public meeting date to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate, set the proposed tax rate to be published, and approve the 25, 2025 appraisal roll. You've seen this slide several times. We talk about how do we define local and state revenue. Both of those very important to the budget process. I have that up there to make a couple of points. Property values, we're going to spend some time in that conversation about local property values, how that affects our budget and our tax rate. And then state revenue, certainly, one good thing that we want to show appreciation to our community, the tax ratification election and the eight golden pennies that are now approved and, and part of the budget. And then we have the basic allotment increase. We'll talk about some things that we appreciate the legislature for in this past session, and we'll single out House Bill 2 legislative increases. So when we think about property values and what we will ask for your approval on the certified appraisal roll, Mr. Johnson, our chief appraiser, works very closely with the school district as we have questions back and forth, not only about school finance, but property values in general. You see down in the net taxable value, 6.9 million, and a point out at the top of this next page, these are the property values for San Angelo ISD, and you see that highlighted at the top, 140K and 200K. So we've... So we've not had a reduction in property taxes voted down by the, by our taxpayers, and so the legislature knows in November, to bring that, when that's brought before the public, there's a strong likelihood, right, that we're all going to be on board with a homestead exemption increase and reduction in our taxes. So, but I do want to point out the difference of what that would have been. So Mr. Johnson provided also a 100K estimate, so if our homestead exemption would have remained at $100,000 per home with an appropriate homestead exemption, it would have been right at 7.5 billion. And if we take a quick look at what it is with 140,000 homestead exemption, 6.9 billion, we see a loss of $500 million in property value. Well, the state does make that up, thank goodness, right? So it's a blessing to our taxpayers to see that reduction in homestead exemption, but as you track the numbers, there's going to be a difference, and we'll come back to that, of that loss of 500 million in property value. This is kind of what it looks like as the property values have increased over the last six or seven years. In San Angelo ISD, we get all the way to 9 billion, and then we had the increase from 40,000 in homestead exemption to 100,000. And then next legislative session, we see in 2526, the proposal moving to 140,000, a continued commitment by the legislature to drive down taxes. We see a small growth from 6.93 billion to 6.98, 0.01, 1% growth. So we take those property values and we bring that into the revenue for the district, and that's divided by local, state, and federal. So in the blue, as we look through some of those very, very same, year to year, we see a slight drop in our current taxes in that very top line in blue, 43.8 million to 43.6. We look down, the main, the main drop in local, you're going to find in interest earnings. As we have built buildings, right, for our elementary schools at Fannin and McGill, those expenditures out of the general fund by the Board of Trustees, as we lower that, then we don't collect as much interest. So for locally, that's the major difference year to year, is that 1 million loss in interest earnings. Now, if we look at the white section for state aid, you see a drastic increase from 51 million to 58 million in the foundation school program, and that's going to be our House Bill 2 teacher raises, our teacher retention raises are part of that. And then very similar, again, in the green section for federal. Just to compare last year revenue for proposed, estimated revenue for 2526, an increase of 5.7 million. Now, we know the bulk of that 5.7 million lies in new funding from House Bill 2. You can see school safety was an increase, a small increase in special education, the basic cost allotment for inflation and/or salaries outside of the teacher raises, and then teacher attention allotment being the large portion of that, 6.2 million in new money. And then we see the increase of 5.7, that new state funding money is, from House Bill 2, is included in the 5.7, but when you subtract off the loss of 1 million in interest revenue, then you see kind of where we came in at 5.7 over. Now, we always know that student membership and attendance is important for our students. We know, we hope to start the year at 12,800. We get paid on only the students in attendance, right? So 93.5 attendance rate is what we've been tracking. That drops to 11,900, and then we've been running approximately 1.3% decline, and that mimics our demography study for student, the loss of student enrollment. So we base the budget on 11,812 students by the end of the year. You'll see that we take the 138 million in forecasted revenue for the district, and we move that to available revenue in the proposed budget. I did include for discussion our compensation considerations, just so that we can see once again the differences between House Bill 2, the mandatory raises that were part of the increase from the legislature. The benefits had to be included in that, so we see 4.4 million in the required raises. We did the TASB salary study to see where we were behind in markets in similar-sized districts and other districts in the area. And then we have the 3% GPI approved by the board last month. That total compensation plan at 6 million is 112 million estimated for salaries for 2526. That moves into the 6,100 expenditures for payroll. We have some slight increases in contracted services, supplies, materials, and operating expenses. So at the end of those increases, we have 138 million to match our revenues for a balanced budget. Very proud of what the district, from board, administration, all the way through the district, it's a team effort to get to zero for a balanced budget. We're fortunate, there's not a lot of school districts, right, that are able to do that at this time. So we've made the adjustments along the way since COVID to try to make that possible. So when we talk about approving the budget, which will happen on the 25th by Fund and Function, we have the General Fund, Child Nutrition, and Debt Service. Those are the three funds that the board will be approving, and then the expenditures by function code 11 through 99. You see we immediately take the 138 million, drop it in the total revenue, and then the codes that you saw here from 6,100 through 6,400, those expenditures by function for the same total, 138 million for the balanced budget. Child nutrition, you do see a deficit of 327,000. We've talked in the past about, at one point, child nutrition, their fund balance was actually too high, and so they received a letter from the state requesting that that, it's not meant, right, for child nutrition to carry a large fund balance, so they were able to drop that. And so the same way here, they'll use their extra fund balance money to, as part of that 327,000, but they also receive grants throughout the year that may offset that as well. And then our debt service is just a straight money in and money out. The tax money that is raised, 24 million at the proposed tax rate, and then 3.3 million, we'll see that in just a minute on the state aid for hold harmless, for 28 million, and then offset by the payment of 28 million for the year. Now, where that tax rate is going to come from, when the bonds were sold, as we track across the page, you can see the years of bond payments in that columns 3, 4, and 5, you see the outstanding bond of indebtedness. We see a payoff of the 2008 bonds by 2034, and then as those bonds are paid, then we kick in and start, we're paying on the 2025 all along, but to a greater amount. So you see the tax rate where the red arrow, .3584, as a proposed tax rate, which was .271 for just the 2025 bond. The .271 is lower than the proposed tax rate when we went to the community and we were making bond presentations. If you remember, that rate was .2726. So slightly lower, that's always a good thing. The bond that we would propose to be adopted, lower than what it would have been when we started the bond presentations. And then you can see over time, a general growth in the tax base, half a percent then allows the INS tax rate to drop over time. If we see greater tax base, greater tax base growth, then the board certainly could drop that rate over time as well. So this is what the debt service looks like for the 2526 school year, at a proposed rate of .3584. You see the local collections at 99% with the 140,000 homestead exemption value collecting just over, well, 24.7 million. We will receive some taxes for prior years, penalty and interest, and then certainly a larger amount of interest this year because, due to the amount of tax collections. So you see in the projected tax collection, 25 and a half million, and then the hold harmless from the state. So when you saw that the tax rate, the property value, sorry, that when the property values were reduced by 500 million, then the state hold harmless the district for that amount. So that was the big push, sell the bonds, make the first payment before September 1. So that 3.3 million is coming from the state as part of our hold harmless to make the full payment of 28 million on the bonds for 2526. And then that will leave a $654,000 projected extra overage that will go in the INS fund balance. And that INS fund balance will be used over time to pay down the bonds, whether that's next year, or whether that's at the end of the bond and pay it off early, those funds will always be used toward the bond. Just to put that in perspective of our historical rates, our MNO tax rate, the proposed .7122, you can see back just a few years ago, the MNO tax rate was over a dollar. So that's dropped over 30 cents over time, mostly compression by the legislature, but we also see the INS tax rate has dropped over time, and then we have the sale of the bond, then that number falling within about the median of some of the other districts that we've seen in 6A and their bond construction. And then historically, if we look back not that long ago, even though the $1.07 is the proposed rate, that's still lower than what we had just four years ago in the community. So certainly appreciate what the Board of Trustees has done over time to continue to lower that, and I know that will be the focus moving in the future. So here we have the MNO tax rate, INS, and the total, how that compares to last year proposing .7122 in MNO, .3584 for INS, for $1.0706 for the proposed total tax rate. Two things that come out during this time to make sure that school districts are in line with their tax rate projections, the CAD has, completes a tax rate calculation worksheet, the chief appraiser calculates that, and two main things that come out of that report, it's six or seven pages long, very difficult, hard to follow, honestly, in some areas, but two things come out of that, the no new revenue tax rate, .77. If the property values would have remained 500 million more, then we would have only needed .77 cents to collect the same amount of revenue. But with the drop in the homestead, the increase in homestead exemption that dropped the property values by 500 million is where we land on the 81 cents. But more important than that number is the voter approval tax rate. We can't go out to the public with a tax rate higher than the voter approval tax rate, and you see that that is a $1.08, just over a $1.08. So we're under, our proposed tax rate is actually a penny under the voter approval tax rate. You'll find the same information in the notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate, that we'll propose that on the August 25th board meeting. One thing I wanted to put, point out that we don't want to be confusing, if, on first glance, you see the first red arrow indicating the drop in property values, and then the second page, when you look at that, it may seem hard to believe that you would actually go from 81 cents to $1.07 and pay less taxes. But you have to remember that this is overall, this is an average. So even though the average home went from 219,000 to 230,000, look what happened to the average value after homestead exemption. So last year, the average home with 100,000 homestead exemption was at 99,000, but now with 140, and then some of our seniors over age, over 65, receiving 200,000, there are a lot of homes that won't be taxed at all through the school district. So you see that that number actually drops because of the $1.07. Even though it's higher, you see that related back to the increased homestead exemption. So overall, you see a drop in average homeowner from last year to this year. And then again, the voter approval tax rate, I've highlighted that, comes out in both reports at a $1.08. We have the expected fund balance next year at 52 million, and then our interest in sinking fund balance is for the 2008 bond, that does not have yet the amount for our 2025 bond. So administration recommendation, this could be done in one motion, but to set our public meeting date to discuss the budget and proposed rate on August 25th, two weeks, set the proposed tax rate to be published at MNO .7122, INS at .3584, for total tax rate of $1.0706. And then also this evening, approval of the 2025 appraisal role as presented. And then I'll open it up for questions.
I just have a quick question. As far as the notice for public meeting, the notice that we're actually going to publish is assuming the tax, homestead exemption gets ratified, as we all are assuming it's going to happen. I just want to confirm that legally, we don't have to post both values, since that has not actually happened yet?
No. They, they actually, the appraisal district was actually told when they set that this time to do it off the November rates. We've not, there's not an expectation that the voters will vote down a tax reduction on, for themselves. So they were tasked with sending the values to all of the school districts at the 140,000, 200,000 homestead exemption.
And that's by the state? So they've been instructed by the state comptroller to do it that way?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm that we're following the rules.
That was my question.
Does anyone have, sorry, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Brandon or Ms. Flores regarding the presentation or budget workshop? I know they've been both very happy to answer questions that have come up when I was looking through my budget workshop, but anyone has any questions, just make sure y'all email those, because although we'll set the dates, et cetera, tonight, we won't actually be approving budgets. So if you have any questions regarding those things, email them this next week so they can make sure we get your answers before you have to vote on this. Any other questions or comments? So do I have, so we do need a motion for this. So this would be, we can do?
A, B, and C.
A, B, and C as one motion, if someone can have that, as long as Dr. Brandon keeps that up on the screen.
Yeah. Dr. Keeman, I'd like to set the public meeting date, move to set the public meeting date to discuss the district, excuse me, to discuss budget and proposed tax rate on August 25th, 2025. Also like to set the proposed tax rate to be published, our maintenance operations at 7.122 cents, our interest in sinking fund at 35.84 cents, with a total tax rate of In addition to that, I consider approval of the 2025 appraisal role as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board questions or comments regarding the setting of the public meeting, the proposed tax rate, or the approval of the 2025 appraisal role?
Dr. Keeman, I know it's a challenge to stay within our means, but our district has been able to do that for several years now, when lots of districts are now depending on the state to battle them out with their deficit budgets. I know I asked Ms. Flores several questions this evening and Dr. Brandon about our, our budget and... budget, and they were happy to answer how funds have moved from one function to another, which they know all about, and sometimes I don't, other than just noticing an anomaly in the budget process. So thanks to them for their hard work on the budget as we move forward, and I think we're obviously fortunate to maintain, moving forward to a balanced budget for this district for sure. And that's in part due to Ms. Flores and Dr. Brandon being careful with how we spend our money and letting us know exactly where we're at and not guessing. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate the fact that y'all have been able to put a balanced budget together, that we're still able to support our teachers and employees by giving them raises, because they're the ones making the impact on the students each and every day, whether it comes from the maintenance, the food nutrition, or teachers, and the fact that, whether it's through the TASB or through raises over the last year and a half, with, you know, we've been able to give people, all those, we've been able to give people raises and continue that balanced budget. So thank both of you. All right, no other comments or questions? I had a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. All right. Now, Mr. Kollenbach, we are going to consider board policy FNCE, which is going to cause a lot of emails, personal communication devices of House Bill eighteen forty-one.
Yeah, so Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the board, you, in July, you approved the student code of conduct, which included the necessary information about the cell phone policy, but it, part of House Bill fourteen eighty-one is that it actually goes into local policy. So tonight, it's just a matter of putting the electronic communication devices into the local policy. So as you have it there, it doesn't change anything about the code of conduct or anything like that, but it does put it into officially, that's the requirements of fourteen eighty-one. So, pretty simple tonight.
Any board questions or comments for Mr. Kollenbach?
Just a reminder, the reason we are doing this tonight is the state is requiring that we do this before the first day of school, correct, Dr. Moran?
That's right. The board is instructed by the legislature to adopt a policy prior to the first day of school for students.
So just, that's why.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve board policy FNCE, personal communication devices, in regards to House Bill fourteen eighty-one?
Make the motion to approve, the approval of FNCE as presented.
A second.
Ooh, went from no seconds to a very quick second. Oh, yeah, motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mrs. Mizelflint. Any further board comments or questions?
She didn't want me to second.
That's right.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes six-zero. All right, we are going to go through our proposed agenda. So we have, we'll have Imication Pledge Allegiance, we'll have a recognition of the Kiwanis Club and the Book Patrol, we will not have a recognition regarding the United Way on the twenty-fifth, so we can cross that out, please. We will do San Angelo Reads and our tailgate partners. We'll have a bond construction update. Dr. Gomez, you'll have an update on academic programs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, do we want to go ahead and talk about board meeting posting guidelines tonight, or do you want to just talk about that at our regular board meeting next, on the twenty-fifth?
And, yeah, I think what we're planning to do is just have a discussion on the twenty-fifth about the impact of the three business days posting, as opposed to the prior seventy-two hour posting requirement, and how that's created some challenges for some things that the board typically gets. We have a pretty good workaround, I think we can work that, but we just thought we'd have a conversation with you all on the twenty-fifth.
Perfect. Yeah, we've already been working through that with this meeting, because that really kind of, we think, became law in July, but we're, and then, bond construction payment update, that's just, Dr. Brandon, you're going to confirm that we've paid something before September one?
I will. The, our, our payment is set for August fifteenth, so by the twenty-fifth, then I'll have the numbers for you of the movement of the money to our investment pool, and then the payment from there for our first interest payment on the bond.
And why that's an important update, obviously, is because it's saving the local taxpayer eighty million dollars, or eighty-ish?
Yeah, it's estimated to save eighty million dollars by that happening before September one.
So, thank you for that.
Payment's on August fifteenth, correct?
Yes.
Friday. Friday, yeah. All right, so well, those will be our information items. We actually have some consent items already listed for potential consent items for next meeting. Donations and pre-agenda workshop and board meeting minutes, keep consent, everyone's okay with that? The T-Test Annual Certified Appraiser List is on page seventy-six. That is something we do every year, and normally consent, everyone good with that, staying Mr. Henry, do you want to talk to us about our HVAC filters and installation service tonight, so we can keep that on the consent?
Absolutely. First one I bring to you is bid twenty-five dash zero-zero-eight HVAC filters and installation. The district currently contracts the replacement for all HVAC filters. The filters are on a scheduled replacement plan that is closely monitored by the maintenance department. A multi-year replacement bid has been opened, two bids were received. The bid tab is attached and shows the results of the proposal. After scoring criteria were applied, San Tech Services received the highest score and was the low bid. San Tech Services has serviced the district for many years and has done an excellent job of work, working with maintenance and our school sites. This contract will begin on September first, two thousand twenty-five, through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, with the option to renew two additional years. The administration recommends San Tech Services, Inc. on, of San Angelo for our HVAC services filters replacement. Do y'all have any questions over any of that?
Ms. Henry, is this why the, the other contract is expiring, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, because we've had a multi-year contract with them previously, correct?
Yes, this is the third one that I can remember of, off the top of my head.
All right, everyone okay with consent? All right, we'll keep that on consent. Why don't you talk to us about bid twenty-dash-zero-zero-nine?
This is just a standard adder for our maintenance and transportation supplies bid. This one, this one allows for us to add additional vendors as they come available with board approval.
Everyone okay with consent on that one? All right, let's go to RFP twenty-five dash zero-one-four, which is San Angelo Stadium parking lot lights.
The San Angelo Stadium currently has parking lots, parking lot lights only located near the fieldhouse. By increasing the number of lights, we will increase the safety and security in the parking lot at night. Plans and specifications were prepared, prepared for the addition of six poles to light up both sides of the stadium. Bids were opened and two contractors submitted quality turnkey bids for this work. These bids were reviewed and scored, and Jet Electric of San Angelo has the lowest price and received the highest score. The administration recommends award to Jet Electric of San Angelo. Total cost of this project is four hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, which includes a twenty thousand dollar contingency.
So my question on that one, Mr. Henry, is on the bid sheet, their number is four forty-one, and actually, Denard Electric is four seventy-one. I think we may have transposed the number there, before we keep that on consent.
Oh, yes, you are a hundred percent right.
So, the-
Board book shows.
Four forty-one, but on the actual motion.
On the motion, okay.
So we could fix that, do people want to keep that as consent, or?
Just go ahead and leave it on the regular agenda, so the people are going to know. It looks like we'll have this parking lot lit by the backside of football season.
Especially on the east side. I mean, on the west side, because in the mornings, when those kids are going to school, a lot of kids are walking across that parking lot. Ever since I was over there, it used to drive me nuts, because it was always so, it would be dark. I mean, we put lights out there, just kind of safety towards the ticket booth and all that, but that was as close as we got, so yes.
So since that's a safety upgrade, let's keep, let's move that to regular, and let's make sure that the board book's fixed to matching the four forty-one.
Ms. Henry, I'm reading it's a ninety-eight day equipment lead time-
Yes, sir.
Plus a hundred and twelve day install.
Correct.
So will this, the ninety-eight day lead time may be right on the backside of football season, but will any, the hundred and twelve day working project, will that affect any of the access to the parking lot during-
It shouldn't.
November, December, somewhere in there?
The poles are going to be right on the inside of the fence, along the backside of the stands, right there on the edge where the fence is, so it shouldn't affect any of-
Not out in the parking lot directly?
No.
Okay, so just surrounding the stadium?
Correct.
All right. So we'll move that to, so Jessica, item six needs to go to regular. All right, item seven is a, excuse me, yeah, item seven is the fund balance amendment for no function codes and no monetary changes for the child nutrition fund. Everyone okay keeping that consent?
Yeah.
Excuse me. And then the general fund budget amendment, again, with changes to function codes, but no monetary changes, again, make that consent?
Yeah.
And same with debt service. Everyone good with that? Fantastic. So everything else will stay consent. All right, so next, we're going to move to discussion regarding action items for our August twenty-fifth meeting. Bills, accounts, and financial statements will need to stay regular. RFQ twenty-five dash zero-one-four will be a, is a placeholder at the moment, I believe I remember correctly. And so that will be, need to stay regular, and I assume we will get that in Friday fax, if we are going to be able to keep that on our twenty-fifth. We have two weeks between these meetings, so, because we have the posting for ten days. So if we can get that for Friday fax, then we can keep that on our agenda. Senate Bill thirteen, Dr. Gomez is going to hit on that, with it being what it is, let's keep that regular, unless someone has questions on that. And I think, Dr. Gomez, I think you did excellent job, I think, just pointed out the parent access and the parent involvement, especially in even a screenshot of the way they're getting to that.
We'll have an official slide deck for the formal meeting.
Perfect. All right. Next is House Bill thirty-three seventy-two, restriction on outside employment of an administrator. This is similar to what we did last month, this for Ms. Goodwin, seeking to continue her work with K-12 Coalition. It looks like it's a very similar setup to what we approved last month. Exactly same. Any questions regarding that? I'm okay with that being consent, since we have it in front of us, unless someone else. Let's move that to consent. Okay, and then, approval of fund balance. This, so this is a placeholder kind of for what y'all are going to recommend to us at, for the twenty-fifth meeting?
Yes, sir. We'll go through and we'll look at, you know, when we talked about revitalization, most of those projects are similar to what we're doing within the bond projects, but we'll look outside of that and see if there are areas that would, the board might entertain designating fund balances, possibly in buses, playgrounds, band instruments, and we'll bring those to you. If you have any additional items for consideration, if you'll email that to me, we'll have those on there for you as well for the twenty-fifth.
So if we can get, since we'll, we'll keep that regular, obviously, but if we could get that also a Friday fax before, that Friday before the meeting, just so we know what we're going to be looking at, if anyone has any questions regarding committed fund balances. As we have previously discussed, like, our goal is to make sure we have a fund balance that takes care of the unknowns of the, of the year, but we also want to make sure that we're getting dollars to our students where they, we're getting, they're getting the impact from that money, so thank you for looking at that. All right, and then, the public meeting to discuss the proposed budget and tax rate, we've already kind of gone over that, you will give your presentation again there, and we will have the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, that will also stay regular. And then, adoption of the MNO tax rate and INS tax rate, which will also stay regular. Any questions or comments regarding those items? All right, announcements for next week, we'll have the September eighth pre-agenda workshop, and we'll have a September eighteenth regular board meeting. And that completes it. Any questions or comments before we adjourn?
And the eighteenth is a Thursday.
And the eighteenth is a Thursday meeting, I think that's probably because of my, is the eighteenth? We're back, we're gone the week before that for TASB?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. We have a TASB the week before, so. All right, with that, no further comments, we have this meeting adjourned.